Ready, set, go.
I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be consider the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on October 25th. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. I'd ask at this point, are there any corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Number Two. This is a public hearing on the ordinance that would be an amendment to Chapter 86, Article 6-1 and 86-165. It's related to structures in residential districts. So I will call on Ilya Gutman to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Council. The current ordinance prohibits exposed fasteners on the exterior finishes in the residential districts. The reason is to avoid industrial look and maintain the values of the property. However, after one of the requests, Steph looked at the existing situations, which we've done before this ordinance took effect, and looked at that, and it looked like exposed fasteners on the low-sloped roofs do not really visible. So Steph's recommendation was to allow the exposed fasteners on the low-sloped roof. The legislation in the ordinance committee, the recommendation from the members was to actually allow exposed fasteners on all roofs, only on roofs, not on the walls. So that's what the recommendation is from the LNO to the council, and that's what was introduced on the previous council meeting. It called for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Ilya. At this time, is there any public comment either from the audience or members of this council as part of this public hearing? John?
Yeah, just, you know, in the LNO meeting, I did vote against this and wasn't quite sure at the time. It wasn't just cosmetic. I wanted to do some more digging on it. And what, at least from my digging into the process, I'm still going to say no on this, mostly because the, and it's not from the cosmetic appearance. I think cosmetically, it's, if the homeowner is acceptable with the cosmetics, that's fine. But I can't say the recommendation, but the suggestions are from companies that provide the materials that sheet metal roofing that's put on with fasteners should really be used on unheated buildings and, like say, accessory buildings or garage. And the reason for that is the constant expansion and contraction of the material as go through a weather change, and it could be typically in a daytime. That, and just to kind of give you an idea, a 15-foot stretch of roofing, which is about what I figured would be on my house if did that, that expansion would be about a quarter of an inch from a hot, you know, sun heating on it to a cool evening, which does happen around here. That can tend to either loosen up the screws or, nothing else, break the seal barrier. The screws that are used to put it down have got a, I believe it's a rubber or a rubber-type liner, a seal on it, and need to be put down at a certain torque to not overcompress the seal, but to make good contact. And during the expansion, that metal is sliding against that seal, ends up breaking the seal. So it's, it's something that can happen. Looking at it, an investigation I did, it had a shorter lifespan than the standing, what's a, for standing seam metal roofs. And actually, some companies recommend maintenance on it, or going in and replacing the screws after, you know, maybe 10 years or something like that. So just the fact that it can cause, I believe it can cause water leakage is reason for saying no on this one, so.
My comment to that would be asphalt shingles are the same thing, and we're going to ban them. In fact, asphalt shingles will expand and come off quicker than steel. And I'll use the example, there's a building right behind us, had steel put on in 1992. That steel is still on that roof. It's on West Marshall Street. Your pole barns have, you can use a pole barn, but these screws, the steel also has a better wind warranty, has a better fire warranty, and it does not, it holds up the hail better. It has a better hail warranty. Can it leak? Are we going to ban asphalt shingles? Because they blow off on a regular basis. They expand and they come loose every spring with, with the houses and the movement of the houses moving your roof. In our climate, going from hot summer day, your roof will be 140 degrees. Cold winter night, it can be negative 30. That's 170 temperature degrees. You're correct. Anything is a move, anything is a pop. I don't think we should exclude from our citizens a choice to have this roof on their house. It's their choice. I don't believe it's the city's choice. It is a good roof. Then, like I said, insurance-wise, you're better wind warranty, better insurance price for wind, hail, and fire.
Okay. Other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. So we will now consider the ordinance. That was the topic of the public hearing. Are there questions about the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, just, Amanda, were you at the planning commission meeting? Just curious what was said there?
I was. There wasn't a lot of comment, actually, at all. There was one question about, my goodness, now I just read on it too, just a second. We'll find it, because it's in our notes down here. Derek was worried about if we were prohibiting this for siding as well, when we were just talking about roofs. That was really the only thing, the only question that came up about it.
Okay, thank you.
And the other questions about the proposed ordinance? If not, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion. May I approve the ordinance as written, as is, allow the roof.
Motion by Jim. Is there a second to that motion?
I'd second that.
Did you second?
Mm-hmm.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move, thank you, Ilya. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening.
You had to go number three first.
Number three first, yes. Agenda Number Three, thank you. That's, this is Channel Parkway pavement replacement project. We have received bids. The recommendation is to, the rejection of the bids and authorize the redesign of this project. Jason Anderson, City Engineer, Director of Public Works, I'll let you provide any additional detail.
Thank you, Mayor. The project that we bid was a concrete surface replacement for Channel Parkway in its entirety, some slight median work as well. On October 20th, we received four bids for the project. I apologize, I didn't get the bid tabulation put in the packet, but you should have had one in your chair and one's up on the screen now. Project estimate was 3.1 million, and our low bid was just under 3.8 million. I think the bids that we received were good bids. I think the $3.8 million bid was a, is a good bid. There's just been cost changes that have happened in the last couple of years. And since we first received our LRIP grant to do this project, I think costs have steadily been on the rise. Staff took a couple of weeks to evaluate this one and go through a little analysis on our state aid fund balance and review what we want to get done in the next 10 and 15 years in the state aid system and put this project into that model. And we just believe that it's a little, it's, it's just grown to be a higher cost than what we were anticipating. When we started the grant application process, I think we were at $2.5 million, and then we got to estimating, we were at a little over 3.1 million, and now we get the bids and we're at 3.8 million. So staff would propose to work a different surface treatment project in and try to get that bid yet this winter, looking at a mill and overlay of some sort is what we're planning. We've met with and discussed with the LRIP grant folks at the state, and this redesign would be, it would not jeopardize our grant funds. So I can answer any questions if we have, if you have any, but we would recommend to reject the bids.
Okay. Thank you, Jason, for your work on this. Questions?
Oh, the only comment that I'll make is fortunately today, PINT had a meeting today, and Russ and I were there, and Craig joined us by Zoom, and we went over this, Jason. And PINT does also at this point support rejecting these bids. And we just happened to have the meeting today, so we had it as an extra item.
Any other questions?
Jason, it's still included for next year, right? For 2023? You still want to get that done?
Yes, we do. And the grant does have a timeline on it that we would need to get it used. We would still propose some of the minor median work that we were going to do with this project, so there'll be some concrete involved. But for the most part, we'll be formulating some form of mill and overlay project. And once we get that designed and ready to go and approved through the state, we'll bring it back to seek authorization to advertise for bids again from the city council. And at that time, we'll let you know exactly what we're proposing, but right now, we're thinking about a two-and-a-half to three-inch mill and overlay.
Okay. John?
Yeah, just, we talked about this earlier, but just for public life expectancy and doing a mill and overlay, what do you think this is going to last?
I think we should expect 15 to 20 years out of the mill and overlay.
And any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation from our staff to reject and also redesign this project?
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Ross. Discussion? If no discussion, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda this evening, consider the approval of temporary on-sale liquor license for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, consider the approval of temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Friends of the Orchestra Unlimited, consider the approval of a permit for alcoholic beverages at city-owned facilities from the wastewater treatment facilities, improvement project. We have a payment invoice, the final one, to Bolton &amp; Mink, the 4M Resolution authorizing membership in the 4M Investment Fund, and then finally, the, consider the approval of the bills in the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda, any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Item eight, please.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion for the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And passes. Agenda Number Eight, the 4M Resolution authorizing membership in the 4M Fund. John?
Just a question regarding that. It's kind of an assumption, but I want it to be confirmed, that even though we're putting it into, money into this investment fund, it still is required to meet the standard, the state standard for investments, you know, the conditions and qualifications that are required?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
That we still have to follow the state law as far as investing. We can't, you know, invest in the stock market or different types of things like that.
All right.
So it meets those requirements. We had a resolution on file from many years previous, so when we did join the fund again this past August, we were good that way. But now we're looking at doing some additional investing, just with the way the markets have changed, but they're not necessarily changed as much locally.
Okay. And with that, I would make a motion to approve the investment, staying in the investment fund.
Motion by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay, Agenda Number 10 is the City of Marshall and the Marshall Municipal Utilities Partnership Agreement. The, we, the partnership agreement has many different parts to it, and annually, MMU Commission and then Representatives of the City Council meet and go over the various aspects. And, and so tonight, we have then the results of that meeting and the recommendations. And to present that would be Dave Shelkov from Marshall Municipal Utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, appreciate your time this evening to go over our annual meeting about our partnership agreement. There's basically three, I wouldn't call two of them substantial changes, but they are changes to the agreement. And finally, a new agreement I proposed today to the council for consideration. As you know, this particular agreement covers a multitude of areas in our relationship between MMU and the city. And so we do have a redline version for you to review and to take a look at that. But I would like us to go to, there we go, we can go to that, that page, that'll be fine. And you could see that all of the changes are typically more cosmetic and more housekeeping changes from one year to another. And if you go down there, that's the one I really want you to take a look at. So when we start talking about finances and what this agreement does to us, the first place we need to go is to the pilot payments. And two years ago, the council and the commission agreed to change the formula from a five-year rolling average to a 10-year rolling average, and that these monies then would go through a formula, and that formula then would create a number that would be given to the EDA of Marshall every year. And so this is the first step in that process, payment in lieu of taxes. And you'll see that our electric sales were a little bit lower in 2021. It's, it's a little bit alarming to me. If you look at 2012 through 2021, it's over a 15% reduction in our energy sales. So we're taking a close look at that to see what we could do to increase that, and of course, work with the EDA. That's why this money, some of this money is going to the EDA, and to encourage economic development here in Marshall. But if you take a look at that and we put it into the formula, and you'll see that the base pilot is 799,333, and the EDA portion of that pilot is 178,551, a little over $3, $4,000 reduction from last year. The total pilot, pilot payments to the city then is 977,884. Any questions about that, comments? If not, we can go to the next page of Attachment B.
Just a comment. Dave, you know, along with, you see the dropping of the sales of the, you know, kilowatt hours between really industrial and whatever. But Minnesota, unfortunately, is one of the few places where we submit to the state, where you need to submit a report to the state showing that you're trying to reduce the electrical usage by, what is it, 1.5% a year?
Right.
And so, you know, one of the few companies that they're trying to cut the cost and cut their sales as really a requirement by the state. So just wanted to throw that in as a, as a comment that, you know, that's not a regular issue with other businesses, so.
That's a good point, council member. Here's, when we talk about energy efficiency programs, we're talking about reducing the amount of energy used to do the same amount of work, right? And so, for example, changing out regular incandescent bulbs to LED bulbs. You get the same amount of light, but you have, you cut the energy by, you know, almost 85%. It's an amazing savings. And so those are the energy savings that you see. It also reduces your sales. And so there is a dichotomy there. In business world, you wouldn't do that, right? You don't want to reduce your sales. You want to increase your sales. But in the utility world, especially here, we work very hard to give our customers tools to become more effective and efficient in how they use their electrical energy. And that is one of the reasons why our light energy sales have gone down. Now, I don't know about a lot of you here, but most people in town have switched to LED lighting. And if you find an incandescent bulb, it's pretty rare now, today. So even if you wanted to go out and buy a light bulb, an incandescent light bulb, they're, they're hard to find. So today, now, everybody's just buying LED lighting, and most LEDs have been changed out. You can see even in our streetlights, most of them are changed out, if not all of them. Now this year should be done. So it's a good point. I appreciate that. So if we go to Attachment B, you'll see a breakdown of all of the commitments that the city has to MMU and MMU has to the city. And we start out with the pilot project, or the pilot payments, and you have that base there of about $800,000, and the EDA support, and the total there. And then we, we step through the other things in this agreement that are specifically laid out between MMU and the city. Streetlights, for example, that's shared 50/50. And estimated 2023 costs will be 277,522, very close to the previous years. And again, that is how, how we did that is, you know, that's, that basically depreciation rather than capital investment. You don't pay for that. It's depreciation over a period of time. I believe it's 15 to 20 years. And that, those numbers are calculated from audited numbers from 2021. Fire protection, protection costs, that's really hydrant maintenance and replacement. You can see that it's gone up. That's the real increase this year for us. Hydrants themselves, we replace eight to 12 of them a year. Hydrants themselves have increased in costs over 40%. It's amazing. Just buying hydrants is very, very expensive today. So these are increased costs. Now, that agreement is, the city is at a 145,000. That stays there. And then whatever else the cost is, MMU picks up. And then we have the agreement between our organizations that bring great value, I believe, both MMU and to the city, is that we share our billing. So all the sewer, all the surface water billing, all of those things are done through MMU, and those have individual costs at a percentages that have been set from years past. And then we have discounted services, 600, total that up, and it's $652,000 with a total discounted services and pilot at $1,630,204. It's a little over, around $35,000 increase from last year. And that totals about 4.36% of our total income. If you look at our income there, 37,421, it's 4.36%. And down there, we just talked about it. It's a 50/50 cost share for the city for streetlights, and the next line you'll see fire protection is at 145,000. Any questions? Nothing has really changed in these numbers, so if you have any, I'd be willing to entertain those questions now. So if you have none, let's go to 6A.4. There we go. And it's the joint land agreement. So as we were just talking about our sales at MMU, we were also looking at ways to encourage and help the city attract new businesses into the community. And one of the ways we were talking with the city and the city staff about how to do that was, we have this million dollars that was set aside to help pay for, or pay back, excuse me, the grant from the state at Commerce Park. There was a $2 million grant that put stipulations on Commerce Park. But after taking a look at that and all the work that Sharon has done with the politicians of our state, we believe that we've overcome those initial issues with a Commerce Park. And so now we're looking at, what are we going to do with that million dollars that was set aside to pay off the grant, to help the city pay off the grant? And so what was decided is, we present to you an option for this money, in that we would take out what that money was originally intended for, and that is to pay the grant off, and put it back into working order, if you, if you, if you will. And if you can go to the second page, we would eliminate what that would do. And the second page talks about what Marshall Municipal Utilities agrees to, to partner with the city and help promote economic development, MMU will make available to the City of Marshall $1 million held in reserve from the original joint land industrial agreement. So we had collected this money, if you remember, over the multiple years we were developing Commerce Park. In the last two years, we didn't spend that money, and we just collected that money, continued to collect it because the agreement had not expired. And so we took that money, and we put it in escrow, and originally, we made that money was to pay off the grant. Now we've, we're asking the council and the, and the MMU Utility Commission to use that money in a different way, all right? And to partner with the city and give it to the Economic Development Authority for, on a project that's agreed to by both the city and MMU. After the city has finished leveraging this money to promote the project, the $1 million will be applied to MMU utility infrastructure extension costs associated with the EDA project. For example, if we wanted to go after a grant from the state, you could use some of this money as in-kind contributions. So it would kind of give you a little freedom to go after and try to secure new loads for our city, new customers, new businesses. That's kind of exciting, to tell you the truth. So that's really a change. It's a change in direction. It's a change in application of this money. And so I wanted to show that to you. And of course, the other change is what we talked about before. It went from 181,581 to 178,551. Yeah, it looks like about a $3,000 reduction. And that has to do with the formula and the reduction in sales. Any questions about this first change? If not, let's, let's move on. Okay, so 10A, and this has to do with the sulfide or, or not sulfites, but chlorides, salts. And so this, this agreement is coming near to the end. As you know, it's been over a year now that we finished our water treatment plant. That is now operation and running and has its own little hiccups all the time, but that's going to happen in every complicated water treatment facility anywhere in the state. So we're excited about that. We appreciate the partnership that we've had there. And so we've had to reduce some, eliminate some, some verbiage of this particular agreement. And basically, the, the change that I want to talk about here tonight is the city, if you look at the second paragraph or the bottom paragraph there, the city will be using grant money secured in 2021. MMU helped pay for half of the upfront costs on that, to fund all chloride education and rebate programs that are scheduled to be continued in 2023. So basically, you guys have, the city has established, you guys, the city has established a rebate program for water softeners, to upgrade water softeners, to help you with the salt going into the wastewater. And then that's basically what the program is for right now. So that's the change. So that's the change in this particular agreement. I, I see us coming to you next year saying that we'll probably eliminate this agreement altogether because it's done, will be finished. Any questions, comments? So the final thing is a new agreement that I'm coming to the council to discuss and to ask for permission to move forward with. And this is the new, we have an old agreement. Marshall Municipal Utilities has two resolutions actually about with this agreement. It's called WAC, Water Area Charges. They were established in 2003. At that time, the city of Marshall was looking at growing substantially and they had actually put together, if you want to go to the map really quick. There we go. They had put together back in 2003, a plan of growth for our community. And it's actually ten square miles of growth around the outside of Marshall. And in that growth, MMU put together an engineering study of what it would take for us to serve water within those ten square miles. We took the total cost of that extension of infrastructure, water towers, pumps, additional treatment, all of that into consideration, and we created what we call a water area charge. So if anybody were to develop in those blue hash, hash mark areas, they would be a charge over and above their cost and they would have to pay that upfront to MMU's municipal, the water utility. And then MMU would then in turn use that money to invest in improved infrastructure for the whole system. So that's the plan. So if we grew that quickly over five, 10 years and we expanded the city of Marshall into all of that area, kind of makes sense. But now we're 20 years later and we've really only expanded eight hundred acres and probably 500 of that is really developed into new, new property that has commercial properties built and things like that. So it's just not working anymore. The philosophy of using total costs and then sharing that with all new developers, it just doesn't work. It's not fair. And I think the council has seen that for the last couple of times that it's come up, it has been waived because it doesn't make much sense. So what we are proposing to you is a new agreement, a water development agreement, water main development agreement. And it's, if you want to go back, if you will, please. It's very simple and it's based basically about how the city approaches sewer construction, wastewater delivery in a new development. So what we're proposing here to you is that we, Marshall Municipal Utilities will work in partnership with the city, Marshall City Government, to encourage economic development and stability by establishing water infrastructure development guidelines. A water main development agreement shall be established that will streamline and promote the investment of water infrastructure and help provide a clear path for any developer wanting to invest and expand in the city of Marshall. And it goes on to say, this is how we design it. We'll work with city engineers to see what would, what would it take for a new developer to, to extend water infrastructure into their new development? So it would just be serving them. So if it's a residential area, six to eight inch main would be required to serve it, depending how big it is. But if this, if MMU came in and said, hey, listen, we need a 12-inch main in there because we want to connect that and loop that back into the city to serve the rest of the city, then obviously, we don't want the developer to pay for that. MMU would come in and pick up the difference in cost of installation. If we wanted, if MMU wanted more valves, for example, to isolate and to do their work, then we would do that and pick up that cost as well. So those are just some of the examples. So what we would do is we'd set a minimum standard that would be required to be installed by the developer. MMU then would take that plan, look at it, apply it to its overall development of the city and make sure that we also build it to specifications that will serve the rest of the community in the future. And we would cover those differences in costs. So when we go to the developer, we can say, hey, this is what the city is helping you with. So we won't charge you for that. We're going to pick that up for you. We're going to help you develop this because we don't believe we want, put that on your shoulders. So that's the plan. It's basically that simple. Whatever the developer needs to extend their water infrastructure, that's their responsibility. If this, if MMU requires anything more, we'll come alongside and help them pay for that. And we will determine that by working with the city and the engineer's office. Any questions, comments, concerns? It's straightforward. It seems fair and balanced. And we don't have to take money from somebody and apply it to something that might never be used in the next 20, 30 years. That doesn't seem right.
Thank you, Dave. The, as I mentioned earlier, last week, our joint committee did review in detail not only what you presented, but the additional agreements that have just had housekeeping type adjustments to them. But we did review those just to be sure that they're still necessary and valid. So thank you and thanks to the commission for their work on this also. Open up for any just general questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll also make that motion to sign the resolution for the partnership agreement.
Motion by John, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion on the motion? The only discussion I would have is, you know, we've had this, we've had this partnership with MMU for a very long time, but we haven't always had a organized formula to determine payment of taxes and to determine all of the other things, including what hasn't changed, but it still is in there, is the cooperation on our engineering assistance between MMU and, and the city. So having that basis for what our agreement is and then building on that partnership every year has really, really been helpful rather than, in the early years, I remember it was like starting from scratch every single time, so.
Yes.
So thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And, you know, there's so much give and take between MMU and the city given the, during the year. I mean, the city helps us many times in the engineering department. We'd be lost without them. And that would be one example of our partnership. But also, you know, the work in Independence Park, the lighting, that I think is a perfect example of how our partnership brings value back to our citizens. So, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote and a motion on the table. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you again. We'll move then to agenda item number 11. This agenda item is the resolution that would appoint Pamela Whitmore of the law firm of Kennedy and Graven as city attorney, Matthew B. Gross as prosecuting attorney, and Dennis H. Simpson as special counsel. So this agenda item comes as a requirement of our charter, which is that the mayor is, every two years is asked to make a recommendation to the council on the appointment of the city attorney for the term of two years. Earlier this year, the council did authorize a request for proposals and there was four firms that submitted requests. The, based on review of those proposals, there was a committee that had reviewed the proposals, interviewed the three of the four finalists, and then made their recommendations. And the recommendation is that there be a split responsibility that, as the agenda item says, that Pam Whitmore would be appointed as city attorney, that Matt Gross be appointed as the prosecuting attorney, and Dennis Simpson would continue as special counsel. So that's the recommendation. That's the agenda item. Sharon, I'll turn to you if you have additional details you want to go through.
I will just add, and I know this is in the memo, we did have council approve requests for proposals on May 24th. And the mayor assigned the review of those proposals to a committee, which included division directors, a city administrator and council member, Du Kramer as the chair pro tem, or president pro tem, rather, of the council. And we conducted interviews and there's a recommendation to the mayor that's included in the action item tonight. I did include in the memo some breakdown in the future costs and then also a look at our 2022 budget and our anticipated non-general revenue project expenditures as well. And then just a historical look at the common expenditures for legal services, which on average is a hundred and seventy-four thousand. We do have, I believe, Pam Whitmore is joining us via Zoom if there's any specific questions for her. And if it goes through, she can certainly introduce herself to the council. Some of you have met her previously through league-sponsored trainings and such. So that's all I wanted to add to the, to the discussion.
Okay, thank you. We'll open up for any questions.
Mr. Mayor, on, on, on the agreement with the legal services question on five, number five B, am I to assume that someone from Kennedy and Graven will be here attend one regular city council meeting? Is that per month or is that just one meeting per month? It doesn't say that. Just said, you're for travel and attend one regular city council meetings in person.
Do you want me to comment on that, Pam, or do you?
I certainly can if you would like me to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for inviting us to join you. So Troy Gilchrist is also on the line, just in case you see his name up there as well. So council member, thank you for the question. That is in-person, one meeting a month. And no charge for, I would be coming for the whole day on Tuesday to, to be present in, in the city without a charge for that unless, you know, doing work under the retainer for the city or if I'm working on other clients, but I'm physically present, obviously no charge to the city. So I, that I would be physically present for one meeting a month and then available other times as well.
And my second question, Pam, is under number six D, attendance at commission meetings and staff meetings.
So that would be.
Is that as needed?
As needed, upon request.
And then my last question, if you want to go to the legal services from Dennis, number four B. It says additional legal, legal services. City administrator requests law firm to provide legal services billed at the attorney rate of two hundred dollars an hour and a paralegal rate of blank.
Yeah.
Is that included?
The agreements were in draft form in the council packet because when council packets were issued, Matt and Dennis did not have an opportunity to review. So since that council packet, Matt and Dennis have reviewed and that, that highlighted section of paralegal rate would be eliminated.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
If not, the agenda item is for the resolution. And the resolution then also does address the subsequent agreements that would be authorized under the resolution. They would be then, you know, further negotiated if there's any, you know, tweaking of language that needs to be done. But there are no other questions. I would entertain a, a motion on the resolution.
Still moved.
Motion by Steve, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion on that motion?
The only thing is, I received a couple emails today from city businesspeople and they had legitimate questions. And they, one of them, the question is, why would we take the legal services out of town? I didn't answer those questions. I didn't email them back. First I want to say is, I've worked at Dennis's office. You guys have an excellent office. You guys do excellent work. This came to, we made a recommendation, it says the council came forward to staff during RFP. And I believe at this point, we're taking staff recommendation because they're the ones who work with the legal folks all the time. And that's the only way I can answer that question right now is it's a recommendation. We asked the staff to do something. They did it. This is what they recommended. And I'm going to trust our staff that the recommendation is what's going to fit their needs best. But again, I've worked with your office, Dennis, and you, your office does excellent work and just, I want to make sure that's known too.
Very good. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, I will move us to a vote on that motion. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. At this point, so Pam Whitmore is on the line. Do you want to say just a word of introduction to the council?
Sure. It's nice to see many of you again. My name obviously is Pam Whitmore. I've worked with Kennedy and Graven. Just as a little bit of background, I went to the University of Iowa Law School, graduated in 92, started at a large law firm and very quickly went over to Iverson Reivers to do litigation work defending all municipalities for well over 10 years. And then after that time, joined the lead in various roles. So where I met many of you with respect to not only helping the research department, but also being an expert for the lobbyists at the state legislature and starting a conflict management program that I went across the state to help with different cities and negotiating different types of conflict as well as doing a lot of training. And then, since then, I have been in the, in, with private law firms, doing civil city attorney work and currently the lead city attorney for the city of Mankato as well as being special counsel to many cities, as previously the lead city attorney for Woodbury. So we have a lot of experience. Kennedy and Graven, you are familiar with. They have been special counsel for you on many matters as well. And so we really look forward to the opportunity to working with you and also to be able to work with Mr. Gross and Mr. Simpson too, and the other portions of legal services that, that you are needing. And I don't, Troy, I, Troy's on the line. Troy, do you want to say anything? He actually is driving to another meeting, so.
So if, yeah, if not, thank you, Pam. We appreciate your participation in this also. Thank you, Dennis. We appreciate your, your work and your continued work that you will do with the city. With that, we'll move us then to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number 12, Consider Charter Commission Revisions. The Charter Commission did meet and has two somewhat, one is especially is a housekeeping thing related to continuity of service for elected officials. And the other is language related to the city attorney appointment. With that, Sharon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, the Charter Commission did meet on October 19th, 2022, and considered revisions to two articles, council member terms of office and city attorney. We have had questions in the past about when does a council member term start? There's a Minnesota statute that provides some language on the term start and then the charter language also provides language. So truly as a housekeeping item, the charter language would be revised to match the Minnesota state statute. And the city attorney language was another consideration by the Charter Commission. And this is to align the language more closely to comparable cities and also make that more clear in terms of, of city attorney language and who provides what and at what direction. So. direction. So the charter commission passed both those revisions. In the packet is a recommendation from the charter commission president to accept these charter revisions. You'll see in the recommendations, there's three specific requirements to bring this forward, is that you officially receive the charter commission's recommendation, that there would be a public hearing scheduled, and we have that scheduled for December 13th. And then to direct staff to publish the notice of the, of the charter revision ordinances on November 19th. So with that, I can answer any questions.
So in summary, the, the action items on both of these would be to, to introduce and schedule a public hearing. Amanda, you are a member of the charter commission. At this point, do you want to add anything?
No, I think the conversation was pretty clear, cut and dry. It makes a lot of sense to kind of close that gap and make clarification between when somebody's term ends and when somebody's term starts. I don't, do you have anything else?
Questions? Now, is there a motion to accept the recommendation from the charter commission and schedule a public hearing on the recommended changes?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Amanda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number 13 is independence park trail replacement. We have a change order, the final change order to consider and then acknowledge the final pay request. And we note that this change order actually is a reduction in the total contract price. Jason, anything you want to add to this?
I would just add that the original contract amount was a little over $375,000, and our final total expenses and construction costs on the project were just under $372,000.
With that...
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve.
A second.
Seconded by John. Discussion?
Just a comment, probably most of you know, talked about it before. I walk the park a lot and meet quite a few people out there, and all the comments I hear are good. I mean, people love it. It's nice. They did a nice job on it. I think they did, the crew that worked on it did very well of cleaning up things when they're done, just taking care of just the little details on it and going through. So I just, kudos to them. Did a good job.
Very well said. This was a very good project. It was very well done. We had a great contractor and crews that worked on this. The finished product is excellent. The, I think we all remember that we had originally applied for a grant from the DNR that would fund this. We were not awarded that grant. Tallgrass Liquor stepped up, and some of their unbudgeted profit from the year 2020 was allocated to this, and largely was able to do this project without impacting the levy of the city of Marshall. So excellent project all the way around.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing that we need to do now is re-hit the DNR for maybe a goose mitigation problem. Because the park is beautiful, the trails are beautiful, but by golly, there's a lot, a goose makes 600 pounds of feces per year per goose. And they're not very friendly. There's an awful lot of them. So you take a child out there, you're going to get chased by a goose, and they can actually damage you. So we need to figure out a way to get rid of some of those geese.
I agree. Yes. I'll move us to a vote on the motion on the table. And we'll close the voting. And, and the motion does pass. So the next agenda item is also a, a change order, a final change order, and acknowledgement of the final pay request, and we're kind of on a streak here this evening. We have several change orders that all result in a reduction in what the total project cost would be. Jason?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Engineering staff's busy trying to close projects out, so appreciate everybody's work on that, and all these projects are under budget, which really helps. So this project was the one block project near the block 100 apartments that are being constructed. Original contract amount was $409,645. Final construction amount was $402,830, so another net decrease.
Questions? Jason, one question I would have is the, the extension of the sidewalk that was not installed adjacent to where the apartments are going up right now, that will be installed by the developer?
That's been our conversation, so we'll keep working with the developer to make sure that gets installed.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason? If not, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Seconded by Amanda. Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. And then agenda item number 15 is our final change order of the evening. This is on the Baldwin parking lot reconstruction, the final change order, and the acknowledgement of the final pay request. Once again, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. It's the parking lot behind City Hall. Original contract amount was just over $159,000, and the final is just over $157,000. So slight net decrease. It's a good project.
Questions? If not, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Russ. Seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number 16, commission board liaison reports. From my standpoint, the Regional Development Commission will meet this Thursday. The Regional Development Revolving Loan Fund did meet 10 days ago and approved a loan. That revolving loan fund continues to be active and supportive in the region. The Fire Relief Association had their quarterly meeting last month. Representatives of Bremer Financial, which manages their investment account, were, were present, and not surprisingly, the, their investment account actually dropped by about 15% based on their investment portfolio, similar to, you know, the securities and what's happened with, with the market. That does appear to be rebounding a bit now, so. But for that quarter, and actually for the entire first nine months of the year, they're down about 15%. Steve?
Mine have not met.
Amanda?
Planning Commission didn't meet either.
John?
Well, MMU did meet, and we acted on the partnership agreement tonight. The main thing that was discussed, diversity, equity, and inclusion also met. They had a presentation on the Minnesota Health Equity Network. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend that meeting, so, but I did get the presentation, so.
Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. CDB held their annual, or held their first ever retreat, I believe, on, on the 26th of October. Some of the things that they decided are ideal clients focus on the Sioux Falls, Brookings, and Watertown area, mothers with families who are looking for a quick, easy weekend trip, and some niche markets, little hotspots such as birding, hiking, biking, hunting, and fall colors. Five-year plan, it says to increase business travel for expo events and business meetings in town. Work with the local businesses to host regional team meetings in Marshall, and increase tournament and events, things like darts, pool, beanbags, adult sports, curling, and roly-woy. They also want to look at increasing the number of state tournament events, sports tournaments, governor pheasant opener, regional college events, and hockey day in Minnesota. They also want to continue to build new partnerships with our local outdoor associations, examples being hunting, fishing, biking, hiking, bird watching, et cetera. They have some one-year goals, which are short-term, and they're going to focus on some of the same things I just talked about, marketing in the Sioux Falls, Watertown, and Brookings area, utilizing TV, digital targeted ads, and work with the local community to get visit Marshall brand around town, and hotels, restaurants, boutiques, visitor centers, things like that. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Russ. Jim? Then to council member individual items. Jim, we'll start. You're in.
I, I voted sticker today. I was going to plug, and I know somebody asked, take you vote early. We could, I think, EJ or Steve, you said we've been able to vote in Minnesota for 45 days already? Forty-six days, which is great. I just encourage people, this is the one time you can really speak to your government, come out and vote. I was watching the news today about, obviously, a lot of this voter doubt. Steve, you can contest, our voting in Lyon County is extremely safe, extremely accurate, and please go vote, and your vote will count.
Thank you, John.
All I have.
Russ?
Thank you. I was able to attend the rental, rental agreements with the property owners that Jason and Ilya conducted. I'm sure I was there, I think, the first night on Wednesday. We got an earful, needless to politely say. The landlords told us exactly what they didn't want, and that they didn't want to pay for anything, but they wanted, and again, the biggest thing that the city, I think, tried to convey is that we wanted to be, make sure that we addressed life safety issues, and we weren't out to look at anything else. If a renter pulled the battery out of a smoke detector, that wasn't going to be the city's responsibility to replace it. It's, it's the landlord and the tenant to replace it. So the first night was rather vocal, and I think the city did a great job of taking everything that was said. And, and for the second night, when they had the owners of the single family, whereas the first night lasted a whole two hours, I think the first, the second night probably lasted a half hour, because a lot of the things that were brought up on the first night, the city took, let's just say, the city listened to them, made recommendations, made a lot of suggestions that things that we were going to do, but things we weren't going to do, and that was charged. But I think the overall synopsis was, I think the city wants the landlords to register their, their buildings, and to let the city know if, if I own a, if I am, if I'm a landlord, but I have John De Kramer as being the apartment manager, that that information is given to the city. So when they have a complaint, the city knows who to call. If they can't get a hold of the landlord or the property owner, they can at least try the, the manager and get a hold of, and take care of a complaint. So I think, Jason, if you want to address more of it, but I think it was very well received from the city. The city did a great job, and I think it's one of those, one of those meetings where we listen to our constituents. We listen to the, to the landlords. We listen to the property owners, and we didn't want this to be a burden in any way, shape, or form for them or for us. So I think, Jason, I just commend you and your staff for, for conducting the meetings and doing a good job. But that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can I, may I just say one thing? Thanks, Russ. And you're correct, councilman, we'll be reaching out, and I know Ilya's already reached out with Amy to schedule another committee meeting that we'll want to talk, I think with LNO, and go over some proposed adjustments to the program based on that feedback, that I think that we can all kind of get what we need out of this program and, and get registration, establish some level of compliance. So.
John?
The only thing I was add to Jim's comment, get out there and vote.
Steve?
Nothing.
Amanda?
I don't have anything either.
Okay, we'll move along then to staff reports.
Just as a follow-up, I know a couple council members mentioned voting. The diversity, equity, inclusion mission did direct staff to put forward election information for different groups and backgrounds and language barriers, things like that. And I know Addie and Alex did a bulk of the work, but we got really good feedback on that. So I was really glad that the DEI committee kind of led that and pushed staff to do that. And it's kind of just the beginning, really. We put bare minimum out there, but I thought that was really good. Otherwise, most of the work is just kind of following through on remaining items for the rest of the year. We're kind of getting down to limited number of city council meetings now, so kind of working our way back on what needs to be done. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. With Councilman Schaefer not here, I'll just add that Airport Commission met last week, and the primary topic was teehanger rental rates. So we'll be coming to Ways and Means next week with the fee resolution that Carlos bringing forward, and we'll, we'll discuss those.
Can I interrupt here?
Yeah.
And I neglected to mention this earlier, but we did talk about this in committee at our last time when we interviewed applicants for the Airport Commission. And the, the appointment that we made to the Airport Commission, that is our second appointment of a member that does not live in the city of, city of Marshall, and that, you know, Airport Commission was one of those commissions that we changed our ordinance to allow, basically eliminate that residency requirement. What our discussion was, is that we should have some minimum level, and what was suggested was 25% of that commission, as well as the others, that no more than 25% be non-residents of the city of Marshall. So that would be one more thing that would go to the legislative ordinance committee. That's what we discussed, right?
Yep.
So, okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple other small items. Planning Commission does meet Wednesday of this week, and one of the items on there will be a plat for the Dollar General store, the land that they purchased. Just wanted council to be aware that that plat will be going through Planning Commission, then City Council at the last meeting in November, and then likely approval at the first meeting in December. They'll likely have their certificate of occupancy issued before then. I just wanted the council to be aware of that, that they're progressing quickly and wanting to be open. The only thing the plat is cleaning up is getting the lot line out of the center of the property. So staff would be inclined to let that keep going along its path, unless I hear some objection. Lastly, you've probably noticed the RRFBs and the dynamic speed signs are up around the schools. That's a good thing. They're not entirely operational yet, but they are up. I think one RRFB might be operational by South Elementary. The others should not be working right now. I think the one at Saratoga might have been halfway working over the weekend, but there's some, some issues that we're getting resolved yet with the equipment. So hopefully we'll be having them operational soon, but they are up and visible, and we're excited to get them going. That's all I've got.
And Dennis?
Nothing.
We'll move then to the remaining items on the agenda. They include the administrative brief for your review, the minutes from the Lyon County Transit Advisory Committee, as well as the Planning Commission September minutes, the PCGQR submission letters, and just a bit of explanation, that is the, our census appeal to correct the numbers that were not counted in the last census, and specifically the group quarters numbers, which, from Ward One, which is the SMSU dormitories and...
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you? I've had people ask me that, and I don't know the answer. Maybe, if the students were here, they would have been counted as residents of Marshall, correct?
Correct.
So, and I'm not, I'm not critiquing our documentation for households, but how do we know, because somebody asked me, how do we know that those students, when they went home, weren't counted at their home?
If they were counted at their home, that would be incorrect. It would be just like someone visiting you, because where they live on January 1, up until Census Day, that's where they drink water, that's where they take the streets, that's where, that's where they reside.
Okay, so just to clarify, so from January 1 to the Census Days, it's not just the Census Day where, okay, because I've had people ask me, how do we know that those kids weren't counted in their home communities, whether it be in Leconee or Wisconsin or whatever, whatever the case may be?
That's very possible they were. You know, and that, of course, is one of the inaccuracies of the census.
Census, yeah.
You know, when you have a census that occurs in the midst of a pandemic, that...
So there's a possibility that a small percentage, maybe a large percent, whatever, could have been counted, but we don't know that. Nobody's going to ever know that.
And would, would be credited incorrectly to some other...
Community. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep. You agree with that?
Yes.
And Stephen, you did the work on this. You agree with that, too?
I do.
Okay, good. Now, having said that, you know, I think we have... Now, having said that, you know, I think we have a, a very legitimate argument whether or not that will make any difference. It goes into a process, and, you know, we don't really have any indication of what the outcome of that process will be.
Do we have a timeframe?
Stephen?
And will it be done in our, in our lifetime, or will it be, will it be done before the next census?
The census has, did what, Janu, June? June 3rd, 2023 is when they're going to actually cut off looking at the reviews that were submitted. I last checked it last Monday, and there was a total of 14 reviews that have been submitted across the entire U.S. And ours was not showing up on there because they had just submitted it.
So they have until June to receive them, but to act on them, it could be another six months or a year or whatever?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Right. And there's no indication that they're going to act on it prior to receiving, you know, all the applications? You know, are they going to have a rolling review prior to June? Who knows?
Can I add something? This is in the letter, but here's why I think this is very clear. In January, or April of 2020, the dorm resident count was 253. In January of '21, it was 488. And January of 2022 is 540. So, I mean, that's a big difference.
Yeah.
And it clearly shows that the pandemic, you know, they vacated these residents. And, and I know in the mayor's letter, which we didn't, this isn't part of the formal census appeal because we would have had to hire enumerators, but we talk about MMU data, which talks about new services, and building permit data, and city assessor data. And I know you've looked at this, too, but, I mean, besides just SMSU, there's really good data that says they missed a lot of people. So, but to me, those numbers of 253 to 488 to 540, that's pretty clear.
That's what's surprising is that because Marshall's not unique, have a university in their, in their town. I mean, I would think that other.
They are.
Communities with, with.
These other communities.
Have the same issue, don't they?
Are doing the appeals. And I, Stephen, the number of communities, we're just kind of starting to see them do appeals, but I don't know, last count, if you had an idea how many cities have appealed thus far. I know it's a big country, but.
No, all I've seen is just the, the 14 that have been submitted so far. We've reached out to a couple other communities that have, that are college towns, and they're also looking at submitting some sort of case to the census as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Interesting.
And then we also have the building permits. So is there any, any other item to come forward before the council at this meeting? If not, this concludes our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Amanda?
I'll second.
Seconded by John to adjourn discussion on the motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We are adjourned.